Yeah.
Okay. Let me get this uh. About you guys, everyone, this is Professor Alman Ra, Professor Emeritus, California State University of Long Beach African Studies Department. And long um also a uh former city councilman for the state of Compton, Compton College School Board and Compton College Board of Trustees along with my co-hosts, longtime educator and administrator in the Compton Unified School District. And then within the fact where he was the first head black coach, not just coaching them in football, but coaching them in life. He drew one of the most historical mules at Centennial High School of Black and Brown people working together. And that's Brother Joe Embry along with Machinda who's straight out of uh living in Louisiana right now. Working with our people, working with young people and working with the community. And the good doctor was a universal in thought practice and activism along with Rasha Key, who sponsored our uh platform. And he will be on this Wednesday with the uh Community Education Network. Tonight, we have a very, very special guest. Um and I'm so happy that he found the time to be on the show with us. And I deeply respect this uh uh his activism. Yeah, this is a pastor William D Smart Jr. Reverend William D Smart is the president and CEO of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, S E L C of Southern California. That's the organization Martin Luther King and Ralph Abbott. I started, it was very helpful in organizing one of the strongest religious movements in the twentieth century called the um Civil Rights Movement. That was fused by the church and the Christian uh Southern Christian Leadership Conference. He is also co-pastor of the Christ Liberation Ministry. When she say that's free number, they free, they liberated uh ministries in Los Angeles, where his wife served as senior pastor. He recently served as director of external training and outreach at the Los Angeles Alliance for the New Economy, a nationally recognized nonprofit organization where he worked for almost ten years. Reverend Smart has pastored C M E uh congregations in Birmingham, Alabama, North Carolina, Forest City, Arkansas, Jackson, Tennessee, Florida, Virginia, and Los Angeles, California. In August of two thousand and two, to the present, he and his wife founded and pastored an independent, non-denominational congregation, Christ Liberation Ministry. Reverend Smart has served as an advocate and disciple of Dr. Martin Luther King throughout his life. He has participated and worked with various social justice organizations and movements and worked on behalf of the African Americans and all people who have been oppressed in some capacity. He started working as faith, started working as a base faith-based outreach coordinator with Bill Clinton, gubernatorial campaign in nineteen eighty-four. And subsequently worked on Clinton's nineteen ninety-two and nineteen ninety-six president's campaign. He also served as a clergy outreach coordinator for the Democratic National Committee during the two thousand, two thousand four presidential camp presidential campaign. He recently served as the national director of African American clergy outreach with Hillary Clinton for president. Reverend Smart worked as an adjunct professor of world religion, Bible studies at Lane University in Jackson, where he also served as interim vice president. He was president of the N double A C P in Jackson, a board member of the S E L C in Birmingham, president of the Forest City Ministerial Alliance and state director of economic development for the N double A C P in Tennessee. He served as co-chair of the Black and Brown Unity Commission, a board member of the community called The Action in Los Angeles, and currently serves at serves a national and serves as a national advisory, served on the National Advisory Board, member of the American Values Network and the National Mastercard Community Outreach. Reverend Smart received a B S from my uh Miles College in Birmingham, Alabama, and a master's of divinity from Duke University. He said he lived with his wife Reverend Thama Becca, Thama Bekala, Crystal and Coast uh Coleman Smart and three children, Gregory, Jeremiah, Karama, Nia, Katura, and Joseph and Jai Hosa, Jared in Los Angeles. And not only that, he's a very personal and close friend, person that I admire and I've had the pleasure to work with on the number project uh where he's a book, he's a active member or an or board member for the Black uh Community Clergy and Labor uh Organization uh that we call B C C L A. Uh and and his activism is 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 broad. He's worked in the labor to get jobs for people. He stood up for the Latinos, he stood up for oppressed people. And he's a rare minister that don't just stay behind the pole pit asking for money. He goes out and work for the best interest of our people. And he's a longtime friend, a person that I admire admire for his work. So without further ado, we're going to hear from my friend and my conscious minister Reverend Smart.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Brother Alman Ra. It is very a pleasure to be here with you and my other brothers that are here. Uh it's just good to be here and to talk to you. So I'm ready.
Okay, good.
Thank you for that very kind introduction.
All right, you did you want to start off talking about L A and the racism there and start off talking about the other works you've been participating in with District Eight, uh arguing over the Coliseum and all of that, all the things you involved in.
Okay. Well, as we know, over the last three, three weeks now, we have had a ruckus here in Los Angeles because it was displayed the white supremacy of some of our uh council members. And so they um, one of them has resigned and the other two refused to resign, particularly one named Kevin De Leon that many of us know. He has just gone on a tour now and said that he has learned from this experience, but he will not, he will not um give up the the spot. So we're fighting because we believe that justice needs to be served. And before you can get to healing, you have to, you know, you have to atone. And his way of atoning is to resign right now. And I've been out there several times with Black Lives Matter, who has set up a tent uh in front of his house, asking for him to resign. I've been um at rallies. We were gonna have a big rally tomorrow, but it's been canceled. We um it and then I've been in meetings with um the elected officials and others, really stressing and pressing them for him to to force him to resign. They're saying that they've done all that they've can. But you know, this is a that meeting, the meeting that took place with Ron Herrera, um Nori Martinez, um Kevin De Leon and Gil Sadia. It was just evidence that they had an agenda, an agenda that was contrary to black people, African people, because they um, you know, they said, they were saying how they have to limit it. They have to attenuate our growth in the city council and parts of the city. It just went on and it just did not affect us. It affected um some, you know, some Native Americans, Armenians, and Jewish brother Jewish people. And so it was just a far-reaching art discussion. And several times when I've been before the city council about this, I said, you know, these discussions are going on all the time and we're always on and we're always the ones whose heads are on the chopping block. But it's important that we make a point here now that that we're not going to take this anymore. We're not. And so that's the fight that you're saying, seeing. And even now, the fight that is going on, I just, I mean, I've just left the meeting. I can't couldn't get back home because um we must stay longer in the meeting and I'm down at City Hall. And so I had to um just find the place where I could sit down and talk to you, Doctor, Doctor Ra, because it's just important that we begin to really liberate ourselves in such a way in our people. That there are a lot of things at stake now here in L A and we're going to make sure that we get um a righteous divide. I like a righteous um amount of things that are going on so we can, so we can have services that are in our communities in a real positive way. Throughout my journey in L A, I have worked on a lot of issues. I've worked on issues of, you know, as president and CEO of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. One of the most important issues that I, you know, we've built is we've always tried to build coalitions. Building a coalition, that's something that Dr. Martin Luther King did is build coalitions. And and so we've built have built coalitions around um to celebrate, well, the commemoration of the March on Washington, because we always deem that this is important. During the March on Washington, we were fighting for jobs and we were fighting for the right to vote and entering entering into the mainstream of life almost that was that we were inhibited from getting in. And so it's always been a fight. And right now, one of the other things S E L C is really does is we really promote voting. And so right now in L A, as you know, around the country really, that the next couple of the next ten days in the in the next ten day or eight, well, nine days now, we'll have a major election. And what discourages me sometimes is the the percentage of that African Americans, of African Americans that do not vote. But we always try to encourage them to do that because it's it's important. You know, the the I always call it the king, the king matrix. And that is, he first fought for people to have a right to vote. And then once you get, then he fought for, then we fought for people to um to vote. Once they had the right, we fought getting them to the polls as something to vote. Then once you vote, you know, you have to select the proper the proper um policies to make sure there are policies that are empowering to black folks. And then from there, you know, you hold people accountable. Those are four parts of the matrix of making sure that our lives get better in America. So it starts with voting. And so right now, we're in that season, Doctor Ra, of just making sure that people are voting and go to the polls, they understand. And so that's where I'd like to stop and just entertain questions or have whatever you, however you deem, Doctor Ra.
Yeah, but could you go over the the challenges that S E L C? Are are they involved in the in the struggle against voter suppression, voter intimidation? And what, you know, uh.
Well, you know, we've worked with the other civil rights organizations to put through legislation or well, it's not, you know, we work to be advocates on those issues when the John Lewis Voting Rights Act and the Voting Rights Act for America, all of those. We were, you know, we're advocate, you know, we were advocates for that. But uh as you know, they both got stopped in the U S Senate. We um, we're hoping that, I don't know that the Senate might looks different for us after next week. But you know, the, but I mean, Doctor Ra, they're saying that now, you know, we're gonna lose seats. Well, anyway, you know, we're fighting, we're involved in different things around this country. Even our local chapter has been, we've been writing letters in the state of Georgia, in the state of North Carolina on behalf, we, what we do is we write letters into communities that um that wouldn't, that are disproportionately don't vote or they're individuals that stay away from the polls. We tend to write to them and encourage them and tell them where their voting place is and how they can find out and different things like that, just to encourage them and to vote. You know, and so we do that. And now we've been on the phone here, we've been raising, you know, I'm just as a role as Pastor Smart, raising money for our candidate here. Yeah, but um that two years ago, we were, we assembled, assembled a group of pastors who were ready to go to any place that on Election Day, there would be any, any type of voter physical suppression. We were going to go out there, but uh it never happened. And we were in here in our jurisdiction in California, but we're happy of that. So it's twofold, number one, fighting to bring forth the. Attempt to um, you know, inhibit our votes. Yes, we so is 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 frontline. We are in that regard, we've been frontline soldiers attempting, but we never encountered any. But we've been ready because um, you know, the even some of the threats of changing of polling places. I've been involved with the county to make sure that everyone was aware of their polling places that have been changed. But right now in our state, it's so easy to vote. There's no excuses when you know, you know, because um you can drop, you can take your ballot, drop it in the mail. You have um, you have days up until the election to vote and then on Election Day. So there's no reason why people can.
Can't hear you, Reverend Smart. We can't hear you.
Question of our vote is important, the something happened. And you're frozen, I froze.
Yeah, yeah, you keep going in and out. But I want you to talk a little bit about Measure A, uh giving the county supervisors the power to get rid of an elective share and also the struggle in District Eight and Nine about what district the Coliseum and uh the Sports Arena and uh those economic ventures are going to be in. Many people online don't know that there's a struggle in the community and the status of Mark Gregory Thomas case.
Okay, so the um, you know, the the county supervisors having the right to fire the sheriff.
You keep going in and out.
We just think that's important because we're in a situation, we're very negligent. And how's this? How, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, this, I'm in this room, I guess it's anyway, so let me be quick so it doesn't go out. So we're I'm in favor of that. Because the supervisors need the power to fire a sheriff like we have right now. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, a little, you know, we missed some of your commentary because you're in and out. You know.
I'm sorry, I guess this place, the wiring and everything. Um, I just supervisors need the right to fire the sheriff, especially when we have a sheriff doing what we're doing, that this sheriff is doing. Okay, they have a right to do that. Uh, we want to give them the right to do that, that's important. So there's a, there's accountability, he's not accountable to anybody but himself. So yes, I'm in favor, we're in favor of that. William Smart is, I can't, I mean, I just want to say William Smart is, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Doctor Ra, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, Doc, um Mark really Thomas situation is that he is um, I can't speak about the indictment, I can only speak of the way that the city council treated him and the what we did. We responded to, we responded to him, I mean, to the situation by taking the city council to court for two reasons. Number one, we didn't think that the court had, that the city council could fire him like that. The judge ruled against us on that. How the other thing is, we said that his replacement at that time, Herb Weston, was illegal because he had already, his his tenure as a city council had been up. The courts agreed with us with that one. And so he ended up, Weston ended up um resigning and we got, and then Heather Hunt took over. That uh when you have the eighth district, uh I mean, the ninth and the eighth district, they were talking about at the around the arena. And we felt that it was really important that that asset go in the ninth. It was in the ninth, it should stay in the ninth under councilman current price. And that's what the, that's what they have happened. Now, uh with this, with this um, with this call going forth from the four council, three councils and the labor leader, we don't, you know, we don't know what's going to happen now. But one of the things is we're going to fight for a equitable, equitable um redevelopment, I mean, um re-proportionate process so that it can be, you know, everyone can win and not, and not one group targeted against the other. And so that's why, so right now, the the eighth district, I mean, not the eighth lost. I mean, they had, didn't have the Coliseum, the ninth has it and it stayed in the ninth at this reapportionment. And um I think that's briefly answering everything you had because I don't want my to go out.
Yeah, good, but uh also uh the uh the issue of L A's city council. They were also saying that the blacks think they are strong politically, but they're not that strong, something like that. But getting back to uh, let me, let me see if there's any questions. I'm gonna start with Sister Linda Shorter, who's uh in Florida. And she's a longtime activist here in the community. Uh, she's worked with a number of organizations here and she's a part of our network. Then you have any questions?
Oh, no, no, not, I don't have any questions at this time because I'm listening, I'm learning, I'm loving this. And I just want to mention, because I was a part of Bay Pac, which is the Black American Political Association of California. And and Reverend, you're probably familiar with the organization, are you?
I did a lot of invocations at your, your events and I've spoken at some of them over the years. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, and I love that organization, but I'm just trying to get reacclimated with L A because what you all have going on and I just heard what you're doing, I'm just like, I'm more than impressed. So I have to keep listening and learning in any way I can help, even though I'm a Ross, I'm here in Florida. I can still do something, so please keep telling us more about what you're doing, please.
Okay.
Yeah, um, we're going to go with Sister Make It Happen. Dr. Shabazz, you have any questions?
Greetings, everyone, hold up family, peace to all. Uh, well, it's a heated and passionate conversation going on. And I came on uh towards the tail end. So I too am going to hear more and learn more uh before I have any questions for uh the pastor. So thank you.
You were over in the Merck Park area, ain't you, uh working with the people over there?
Uh, the Black Women for Wellness?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, definitely.
I'm very familiar with that organization, I work closely with them also.
Absolutely, very active organization out in the community, doing a lot of work, creating different missions and different action committee groups and uh really, really busy, you know. So I'm proud of what's happening over there. But again, I'm going to listen more and learn more of what's happening with the pastor and uh before I have questions.
All right, Brother Machinda, who's in uh, I think Louisiana, right? Machinda.
That is, yeah, that's, that's correct. Um, no, I don't have any questions. Um, I'm just listening as well, I just thank you for presenting tonight, Brother Smart. You know, we have some heated elections going on this way where I'm at. Um, trying to put in the first black mayor uh in the city where I'm at. Uh, this brother's running, it's uh a lot of voter turnout, it's like a lot going on. But um, I appreciate you uh of your work and um, like I said, I'm gonna stand by and listen for right now.
What, what city, what city is that in Louisiana?
I'm about, I'm about, I'm about fifty miles north of Louisiana, north of New Orleans.
What's the name of the city, Machinda?
Bogaloo, Louisiana, the home of the.
All right.
Well.
Reverend Smart, you're still breaking up, you're still breaking up. I don't know why.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, now we hear you. Okay, brother, uh, history and Joe, Embry. Are you there, Joe?
Yeah, I'm here. I don't have any questions.
Okay, Brother Rasha Key?
Not at the moment, just listening, very interesting.
Brother Smart, I have a couple of issues that I'd like to ask you to comment on. Oh.
Professor Ra, you didn't ask Brother Doctor.
Yes, I did, oh, I'm sorry, but yeah, he said he didn't have, Brother Doctor, do you have anything to say?
No, not right now.
Okay, I thought it's uh, oh, the issues of voting with voter suppression and things, a lot of blacks got out to vote uh in two thousand and twenty. They uh turned the Georgia Senate, senators took both seats. They helped Biden get the presidency. Be on the two thousand and eighteen, they helped the Democrats get the uh control of the Congress. Uh, so a lot of black people vote, even Biden said he wouldn't be president if it wasn't for the black vote. And I said, I won't forget that. So we do have a lot of black people that vote. My concern is the Democratic Party, once we get them in office, when we get them in office, they don't seem to be as aggressive as the Republicans are. There's no way Trump shouldn't have been indicted after January sixth. And all this stuff waiting until after the election, I gotta get an iron cloud case. It's not the way we are treated and they keep saying nobody is above the law. Second, they, they don't seem to, even if it's not even Trump. People won't even respect subpoenas. If we didn't show up for subpoena, we'd still be trying to get bail money. I want you to respond to when we go to try to get more black people to vote than that vote, who say the Democrats are too soft, even Reverend Warnock in our, in uh Georgia. They asked him, are you gonna, are you gonna support Biden if he run again? But they first asked Herschel Walker, are you gonna support Trump? Herschel Walker said, yeah, he's my friend and he gonna make America great again. Warnock said, well, uh, I'm just concentrating on Georgia right now. And he could have said, well, I support the Democratic nominee. It seems as if there's some intimidation. It seems as if there's some intimidation.
Yeah.
By the Republicans who campaigned year round. And the Democrats don't come and tell that's an election. Did you respond to that criticism?
Well, I, um, I thought you were gonna go another way on that, but um, but, um, you know, I, I, first of all, my credentials are deeply rooted in the Democratic Party. I used to be, as you read in my bio, I used to, um, be director of Votering, um, African American clergy for the Democratic Party, and I would organize or in certain places go in and organize preachers to support different Democratic leaders. Um, that was just part of what I did, but, um, I, I have felt that the Democrats have been weak. I felt they have, they have, um, there have been issues that, that you're right, have a Republican held that issue the same way. Um, they would be much more aggressive. I think we are, we, we are, we are allow ourselves to be attenuated on issues a lot. Um, we just wanna, we just, sometimes it looks like we just wanna keep everyone happy until we get elected. Floyd, the, not, not the Floyd, that's the predicament that black elected officials find themselves in. Is a lot of time, they cannot, they don't wanna alienate a base. You know, they have the black base, but they don't wanna alienate this white base that they, most of the time is gonna be supportive of them, they, we think anyway. And so they tend to be real soft on issues, and they tend, you know, there's no excuse that um, Trump has not been indicted. I don't know why, I don't know why. He, he should have been, you know, we all can say if it been a black man, he would've been in jail by now. But you know, Trump just went ahead, and he just did not follow the law, didn't care about the law. But here's the thing, he has such a powerful base that a lot of those Republicans have felt that they have had to go along with it because it represents their base. You see what I'm saying? You know, the, 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 um, minority, the, 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 the height, the, the minority, um, um, Kevin, who is the minority leader of the House, and all of them. Remember at first, he was ready, very aggressive, but then he turned right around. And they allowed him to break the law, they don't care, because he has this white evangelical sup- white supremacy base that is coming out and gonna support him. What we have to do, I think, is we have to build that old ba- our base and make sure that we're gonna come, we're going to, we're going to vote as much as possible on the issues. Especially the ones that affect us. Now, let me tell you that, um, if, if if we continue the way we're going, we're not gonna have any opportunity to really build policy that affects African Americans, the poor, the disadvantaged, and, and the marginalized for about a hundred years. Because the, the court is going in and has moved in a certain direction. And ten days from now, we don't know what, if, if, we don't know what will happen. See, so I tell blacks, I tell my people this, I say, look, we wanna vote for the people that is closely akin to what we believe in. And not, you know, if that's Republican, you vote Republican. But in reality, we're never gonna get everything we need in America. We're never gonna get it all, but who will be come close to giving or voting or impacting or developing the public policy that aligns with our values in more ways, you know? And still with me, that's Democrat, as weak as they are sometimes. Not aggressive sometimes, still, that's the people, that's the, that's the movement.
I, I agree with you.
This movement, you know, that's okay, that, that's, you know, Biden, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
I agree with you, but the issue is not voting for Democrat. I'm gonna vote for a Democrat no matter what, cause that's just gives us better space to continue to struggle, we ain't gonna have no space if the mega party win. But they won't even call it the mega party. Like you said, the, uh, the, the regular Republicans then converted over to a mega agenda, so why keep calling it the Republican Party? Call it what it is, it's a mega party, it's Trump's party. Cause they, they intimidated, he nominated the people that we run for office. And they're not of the Republican Party, don't have no chance. Second, the cases that Trump faced was brought about, the major cases that's getting traction, was brought by black women uh, in Georgia and in, uh, New York.
New York, New York.
And then the national, uh, government comes in and say, wait till after the election. The continuing stuff in New York, they're moving forward. But the point is, but they're going after Trump Organization. My point is, I, I'm not dealing with the Democratic Party. That's our party, for right now. I'm dealing with once they get in office. Attorney General, who letting voter oppression and intimidation exist in Arizona, in Florida, where people are showing up with guns in Texas. And they won't even send federal troops down there. They say the case law enforcement uh, ain't supposed to be there to intimidate, but they should have agencies. Unless they own official business, they should make it official business, that they send troops down there to watch them while watching people vote. I don't, I understand the lack of aggressiveness, and I know that you are aggressive. And I'm not speaking of criticizing that, but I'm just dealing with. When we go and try to get young people to vote, they wanna see action.
Yes, they do.
They wanna see, they wanna see something they can mobilize by. Uh, you, you understand? And what is, uh, you know, it, it, it's difficult to, to galvanize.
Yes, it's difficult to galvanize, but we have to look at how our lives, you know, I, like, I was on a call the other day in, in, um, North Carolina, and I, I told some people, how would your lives look if you woke up November ninth and we lost, you know, the Republicans are back in charge of the Congress? How would you look? And they said, you know, it would be, nothing would ever get accomplished that we need for our vital sustenance every day. And I just said, well, that's what we have to think about. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be perfect. But I, like you said, it's a movement, and we have to, you know, we have to explain. One, there are two things that are working that I, that are working on our benefit. If one of them is that people have been really motivated for, um, that we have a black woman, Katanji, Judge Katanji in there now. And there are just a lot of black women who are really campaigning their butts off because they feel that, that was just, you know, you look at one thing, and that's that one thing. And then the other thing is, um, I didn't know that the, the way that, um, the abortion issue is really, really, uh, thriving in certain communities, whites and blacks and everything, and so these are some of those, they used to call those the, um, the issues that could, you know, make a difference. And those are the, some of the issues that, um, some, you know, some African Americans are responding to. Um, it's a terrible, it's the worst time to have an election with the way the economy is, worst time. And, you know, we could, um, the economy is bad based on, you know, based on a war. And based on the ga- I mean, what the gasoline prices are doing, and that affects us all. And I really think we're gonna wake up on November ninth, and it's not gonna be the way we thought it was gonna be because, um, if that's the case, is, you know, gasoline, you know, I never, one time back in nineteen, you won't believe this, but one time in nineteen, I'm sorry, not nineteen, and, yes, and two thou- two thousand, well, it was nineteen ninety-nine, I told, um, at the Vice President Gore. I said, man, if you don't, if this, if this gas price doesn't go down, I said, you gonna be in trouble. And I said, you gonna be in trouble.
Yeah.
Why? He said, I know what you're saying. Um, you know, people respond to the price of gasoline. It's a, it's one of those, in, it's one of those issues that you see in your pocketbook. And we, and nothing that, you know, I, it's, it's just one of those wedge issues that is gonna happen, is gonna affect us in a real way. I hope not. But we just have to, Doctor Rock, we have to get out to vote more than ever before. Because there's gonna be a lot of things affecting us, a lot of things.
Yeah, when the, when the, when major corporations get major tax breaks, it's from and retax them, uh, for just fifteen percent of their earning, and make them pay. They get mad, so they up the prices. All the major corporations, they control food and gas, uh, are inflating their prices. Now Biden's coming out eight days before the election, telling me he's gonna tax their profit. And it's just like carrying bass. I love carrying bass. I put it on my Facebook all the time, urging people to vote. But now she's just not calling this man alive. She should've been calling him alive from the beginning. Ain't no such thing as solving the homeless problem. You gotta manage it. You can't solve that, cause it's a, it's a, it's a universal problem. It's not just an, uh, American problem, homeless people all over the world. So, uh, that, that's, 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 that's the reality. We got refugees living in tents, and, and tents, and he's all over the gun, all over the world, but go ahead.
I was gonna say, you know, getting back to the character of the candidates, uh, you know, they are traditionally Democrat.
You, you keep, you're breaking up, Reverend.
Real nice. They have been real nice. I broke up that time, someone called, I, someone called me, can you hear?
Yeah, we can hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, someone called me, it interrupted my phone. I'm just gonna say, you know, we got, we got our people to be much more aggressive. And I don't think, I don't, you know, just, uh, see, they, they don't wanna bring up, you know, oh, she goes that way. She a mad black woman, a mad black woman, you know, they love to label us. You know, running for office as an African American is a difficult thing. In my past, I have been asked several times, would I run for something? I have said, no, absolutely no, because it's real difficult. Um, people ask, people have different expectations on you, than they do what the other candidate, you know? They would call her a mad black woman, or this and that, as nice as she has been. But, you know, it's, it's all part of the process, Doctor Rock. And we have to, we're never gonna change that process until we really begin to let people show out. Our power is in how we spend our money, and our power is in our ability to vote. If we are, if they know that that, there's a group over there that's voting ninety percent of the time and, and will come on you and will challenge you and will hold you accountable, then they're gonna do more than we need them to do. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna go around again, see if there's any questions yet. We're gonna start again with Linda, um, Miss Shorter. Miss Shorter, do you have any question?
No, I, I do not have any questions still at this time, with, I'm just still loving this, but no, I have no questions.
Okay, Doctor Shabazz, you have any questions?
Have questions, but I definitely have comments. So, I want the pastor to know, I appreciate, again, the passion and, and your message and what you're communicating and delivering. And thank you for recognizing the, the, uh, all that it takes in terms of stepping up and being a leader, and what that means uh, on us and, uh, in the community.
Well, you stop calling me.
Thank you for, uh, your time, and I look forward to, uh, continue, uh, the message that you're delivering.
We hear you, Linda. We, we hear your phone. Then go ahead, Mr. Shabazz.
Again, just like I was saying, just appreciate your time and the passion of what you're communicating as we're out in the communities, in our circles, some of the messages, and some of the, uh, the work that, that we are to continue doing. Uh, you know, you're preaching to the choir, so thank you again for your time, and, uh, and just all that you're putting into this, uh, program here. So, thank you again.
All right, Brother Machinda? Yo, mute, Machinda. All right, we'll come back to you. Doc, good doctor, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, like I said, I'm not really into politics. Um, and I just started voting when Obama ran. Um, my question is, every year I hear this, we have to go and making everybody fear and scared. What, what will happen if all Republicans took office? What's the worst, what will happen? That's what I wanna know. And the other question, what will happen if all Democrats take office? I mean, is, everything is so scary. What will happen? I, I, no one's telling me what will happen. I don't understand what will happen. They, what, you know, I'm pretty sure some laws are gonna change, but just tell me exactly what you predict will happen if, like I said, if it's a Trump-run world, what exactly will happen?
Well, yeah. The policies, policies that would benefit, say, the poor and the needy. Uh, things like educational loans and, um, grants and housing policies in the departments of trying, you know, uh, uh, they, 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 Republicans, they take from the poor, give to the rich. It's a, that's, there will be a lot of tax reduction, and with tax reduction come, of the poor comes reductions. That affect the masses of people, of poor and black people. So you will see this shift going on, and then for those, that is important to they would institute a, um, a ban on, a, a, a ban on all, all types of, i- i- all, all types of, um, women's women's services and going to, um, affecting, um, those who would, uh, uh, you know, have, um, abortions. Abandon in a national, a ban on abortions and things like that, that would have, that would happen. Um, there would, he wouldn't, Biden, the next two years, we would see nothing happening because they will bottle him up to make sure that no, nothing he proposes because everything that he, they propose, he would, um, he wouldn't sign it, okay? And so you will have this And so you will have this bottleneck of, there will be no services. And then um, two years later, I project that if that happens, Biden would be so, um, so it would be such a negative effect on him that when he ran again, he would probably not get elected. You know, these things happens in cycles, my brother. And it's just important for us to understand that. Um, money going to, all, you know, all the things that are important to us, um, it, it won't be there. We've seen this before, my brother. We've seen this, the cutting of something as, as valuable as um children's programs, you know, things like that, gone. They, the government is, I mean, Democrats like big government because it affects more people and helps more people. While at the same time, Republicans like a small government so that all their friends can benefit from the tax, and they get richer. So you have the, you'll have the increasing of this gap again, where there'll be a bigger gap between the rich and the poor. That's what will happen.
Okay.
And see, and, and so this is not, this is what I see. Kinda like you said, Republicans take office, none of us get nothing. Democrats take office, everybody gets something except us. So we're losing on both ends, man, cuz Democrats get in, they gonna be hooking up all the immigrants, and we're not gonna get nothing. Republican gets in, nobody gets nothing but the rich. So that's my issue here. I, that's what I see, man.
Brother, I, I just, I just, um, I just watched three members of my congregation file for um their um, to have their educational uh, their educational loans excused, uh, whatever, you know. They, and is taking a lot of pressure, is gonna take a lot of pressure off of them as applicants. And they've already signed the application, just waiting for it to go through the, waiting for the fed, the judge and federal courts and them to work that out. That's a benefit for black folks, man. Okay, that's a benefit for black children who don't have to have, I wish they had done it to me. I finished my, paying off my loans for divinity school um ten years ago. But it took me twenty years. No, bro, you got, you, you got to understand what the policies, that's why I say, don't look at the, look at the movement, the policies. We're benefiting a lot from this, all that PPE money that I, that they stole. But how about the, how about the individuals of those black folks that just got those tax rebates, those rebates on that? Those are black folks. Too. No, not everything, you know, I'm not, you know, not everything. You know, there's some things, but no.
Uh, Brother Reverend Smart, also, and, and, and good doctor, that's a great question. I mean, it was an excellent question. Appreciate it. But also, if all the Republican, if the Republicans take over the House, the Senate, they already got the Supreme Court. That set the basis for them to get the presidency in the, uh, uh, um, the twenty twenty-four. But the, all the investigation that's going on with six, uh, uh, January sixth and other investigations will go away that the Democrats are, are dealing with. Second, they will, and they said, they, they're saying this right now, they're gonna impeach Biden. Nullifying the popular vote that unseated Trump, even though he got seventy-seven million votes. Biden got ninety million. That would be gone. It'd be minority rule again. You understand? Trump then lost every popular vote. Bush lost the popular vote. He went for the Supreme Court, he wouldn't have got involved. So it go back to minority rule. Second, they're gonna get rid of social security. I'll cut it back so drastically because they would rather cut poor, poor people programs and use that money to run the government than to be taxed, taxed rich people to build up money that, that, to run the government. That, that, the other thing they would do is they will, they're a party of revenge. They already said, they gonna put people like Maxine Waters, Barbara Lee, uh, the sister out of Texas, Sheila, uh, all of them gonna be investigated. They already saying it by Congress, bringing them up on charges. And if they get control of the Senate and uh Congress, they're gonna impeach them. They already calling this. It's a, and then, and when it comes to immigration, immigration is caused by the exploitation by major corporations of the countries that make it such a problem for people to eat in other countries, even border countries, the United States. They make them wanna come here. And they say they're against immigration. But all over Trump golf courses, he's in there. Under, uh, uh, immigrants. They're not uh went through the right process. Um, Schwarzenegger gave a one a baby. He was the governor, uh, uh, the Latino worker, had, carried his baby. Nancy Pelosi had immigrants working for her until it was exposed. They talk that stuff, but you need an immigration policy. And this is where, where I'm manned by Reverend Smart and BCC LA. And the national movement is the whole Democratic Party a gallant for what they gonna do, and that is taxing the rich more than fifteen percent of them. Expand social security. Expand Medicare. They would deal with student loans, they wipe them all. They'll deal with the federal suppression of votes. Get rid of that postmaster who got rid of a million votes. One reason, I mean, it, it's just so much that's to our benefit if the Democrats can hold on to the Senate and hold on to Congress. But if these wild people, mega people, they're not Republican, they're mega, they're Trump people who's not just a candidate, but he's a cult leader. He got people believing in Junaid. He got people believing in wild conspiracy that he's not, and we lying to their face. And it's not just him. It's the people that follow him and enable him. So those are the issues.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Doctor, I just said this past seven, and they, they let me, they let me stay to. But I really appreciate you so much and your panelists so much. And I would love to be on when I have um before my screen and just can talk.
We'll have you back, we'll have you back, we had you to come back after the election.
Give an analysis.
It's gonna be a struggle.
Okay, God bless you all.
Right there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
Brother Ross, do you have any issues? I can finish this up.
No, I'm just, I'm just listening, Professor Rock.
All right, brother, yo, you have any questions about politics issues before we close out?
I don't suffer from illusion of inclusion, you know, my
When you say that, tell us what you mean by that.
It's illusion. You know, we go through our list, and we thank you goodness and that, and we don't get jack. We get screwed whoever's in there. You know, but I know that, you know, the Democrats do lots of poor people and whatnot. But at the same time, these Democrats are sending billions of dollars over to, uh, 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 to Ukraine and all this other stuff. Whenever it's the issue with us, they don't send no money. So you know, it's just, it's bad. And I wanna, I wanna end this by uh using the words of my brother Kalen Maikia, when it comes to politics, truth is just a word that rhymes with baby Ruth, you know, and now she, she done recused herself from, from voting in affirmative action thing. Now we ain't got enough Democrats in there in the first place. You gonna recuse yourself from voting on that? What's up with that? And I don't wanna talk about the brother who was the big cheese a few years ago. I ain't gonna go there cuz I don't want people throwing tomatoes at me, but do- during his second term, there's plenty he could have did. He didn't have to worry about being reelected. You ain't gonna put nothing to fault, you know, to, uh, 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 you know, for your people specifically. You gonna do something for all these other groups. Why can't you put some legislation for that you, that it don't require no uh, uh, Congress, just you signing? You know, why didn't that happen? So you know, like I say, I, I'm all vote, and I vote Democrat. Although my finances probably favor more Republicans, but I ain't rich enough to be on their side either. But you know, it, it's, it's a bunch of games, man, just like what's going on now. It's, uh, what's this guy running against Bass? Now who gonna invest a hundred million dollars in an election that don't even pay you barely over a hundred thousand dollars? Come on, man. They got stuff going on behind the scenes. They do all kinda stuff. And you know, I just swear that I don't like it. I think we need other issues we need to be focusing on, like with our kids and us to start to produce something as a people. I think we put too much time into the political arena. I'm, I'm, I'm more of the boogity Washington persuasion. We need skills, we need, you know, to own stuff, we, you know, so we can deal with each other. We, you know, we don't, we don't produce potato chip or a safety thing. You know what I'm saying? So that's just my take on politics. I don't deal with it. I know it's out there, but I vote, but I still ain't with it in my mind cuz there's other pressing issues that we need to be dealing with as people, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
All right, Sister, Sister Shabazz.
I'm glad, uh, you know, it was, uh, like I said, a passionate conversation, you know, but uh, it is what it is. We gotta do what we gotta do. We gotta be about our business. We gotta be on the ground, taking care of what's real. And um, you know, that's how that is.
Oh, good. Appreciate you, Sister Shabazz. You, you get, that's a good analysis. Sister Linda, are you still there?
I'm still here, yes.
Yeah, you have any comments, closing remark?
No, my closing remarks is just, uh, again, I just love what I heard and I'm learning, and I'm gonna actually study some more of what he was saying about L.A. because I didn't realize. I mean, we do this, having the same kinda issues, not to the extent that he was talking about here in Florida, but I will be reading it more tonight and researching more on what, cuz I love it, and I'm, I thank him for even just bringing me up to breast. I appreciate it.
All right, and the good doctor? Any comments?
Yeah, like I said, and uh I was wanting to bring up a comment, hope we can talk about it n- next time, but I was watching uh Dr. Claude Anderson, and he said, you know, a few years ago, we officially became, and as of right now, we officially low-class people, bottom-class people, blacks. Came officially, low, low in the top of the poll for life to change com. But like I said, man, nothing's gonna change because Democrats, Republicans, Democrats give us something, the people above is gonna go twice as higher, man. We're always gonna be bottom-class people. Nothing's gonna ever change. We get a little crumbs here, and everybody will be happy, I guess. But I, I, like I said, I, I don't see nothing, man. As long as we're fighting for resources, nothing's gonna change, man. It's like, I'm, I'm like with Brother Henry, we gotta develop our own resources, man. As long as we depend on their resources, nothing's gonna ever change, man. And like I said, give me one year, like I said, I'm not into politics and voting. Was there ever a year where Democrats came in and black people moved up, you know, increased their positions fifty percent over others? I, I don't know, I don't know any time history, cuz every year, I, I believe, man, we're always, you know, this is critical to vote thing. Cuz we gonna lose something, and every year we fighting for something, and we at the bottom. You know, so I don't see any changes ever coming. You know, I just voted my stuff. I, I'm, I, I, my little ballot, I voted yes on everything, all those little things, you know, and I voted half Republican people and half Democrats. I mean, when it came to the governor, I saw that governor debate, this guy, he's going up against, this guy was not that articulate, man. I mean, this guy, I had, I, I I always vote Green Party. I never vote for Democrat or Republican, but it was nobody agreeing on, on this ballot, man, and but uh, nothing's gonna change, man, you know. You gotta create your own resources. You can't depend on the government. I'm like Brother Henry, man. You, you gotta do for yourself, man. Like, you know thyself. I just saw someone else who was saying that. You know, like I said earlier, off, off air, they did this bank thing to Kanye, shutting down a bank and saying, your money is not welcome. That took me to another woke level. And they can just shut down your bank, man. Like I said, you, you get, you fight and get uh reparations. What if they pass a law and the banks say they don't wanna accept your check? You know, man, we're, we're, we're in a bad situation, man, and Democrats and Republicans can't solve this. We gonna solve this ourselves, man. So as long as we depend on them to solve it, it's never gonna change.
Okay. Uh, Brother Ross, do you?
Yeah, um, you know, I, I sit and do mathematics all day and every day. And I try to think as logical as possible. And as far as, as I could see, and it may be short, um, the position that blacks are in is, is pretty clear to me. It's because if you are targeted, and if you are the main target, because there's something about you that's more extraordinary than any other when you break down people into ethnic categories. There's gotta be something about you where the target is you all the time, even when you're peaceful. So looking at that, that just let, lets me know that if we ever, cuz Ross say nothing gonna change, uh, uh, brother, brother doctor, he say nothing's gonna change. Well, that's why you have to change. We as African Americans or Africans, period, whatever we're doing, we need to change it. And then I, I think the light will start to shine a little bit brighter, and, and it, and it will continue to. And, and this is why we come on this show weekly and do what we doing. We're targeted because there's something about us that's more powerful than any other ethnic race, that they gotta keep trying to put us down. So we need to just work on us. And I think things will change, really will change. So that's why we do what we do. And uh, we gotta get more people like us, and hopefully people gonna start gravitating to something that makes sense versus something that don't. All right, Professor Rock?
Yeah, well, you know, I, um, I believe in struggle. Yeah, y'all know. And Frederick Douglass said, without struggle, there's no progress. I have seen change. I've seen positive change by many African people. We have more millionaires than we've ever had as African people. Second, at one time, we couldn't vote, and now we can. That's a change. Um, as far as economic, during the war on poverty, it started in nineteen sixty-five. And then after that, they had teen posts, they had Manpower Development Program, they had anti-property program. Even the program that we had on Monday, I mean, Wednesday, last Wednesday, about uh Job Corps was a, was an anti-property program. And it created a black middle income. And many of them moved out the community. I mean, they was working as director of Head Start, director of, of, of Manpower Development, Watch Labor Community Action, at Jobs for Young People. And I, I see change, and, and I'm hopeful for change. I see organizations fighting for us. It took us a hundred years to get out of slavery. I know we won't think right now. You know, just like you, when you go through the fast food place. You know, but it don't go that way. It's a long You know, but it don't go that way, it's a long protracted struggle. Well, my little king said, I may not get there, you know, with, with you. But I will get to the promised land, because he recognized it was like, man was assassinated, his house was bombed five times. He was criminalized, put in prison. For us, they live a better life. I just feel that I have an obligation personally to not just let it happen and hope nothing happened that I regret, but to fight against it. The Panther Party said in nineteen sixty-eight, we have to fight within the system. Malcolm said in nineteen sixty-five, we have to fight on all fronts. That's inward and outward, in the system and outward. I'm for black businesses, we add black businesses. We used to have a black enterprise, we used to list the top one hundred black businesses. There's a business in Compton, it's one of the top millionaire businesses. A brewing company right on Santa Fe in Artesia, across the street. Nobody knew that was a black man running that, he was the owner. Um, uh, brewing company, I can't remember it right now. Um, um, there are many black people that are doing, you know, LeBron James, you know, uh, opening up a school. Many young people have opportunity to get education. With Deion Ja, uh, Jackson, with Deion the football player. Sanders is doing for Jackson State undefeated, bringing national recognition. At one time, Joe Embry could tell you the story, that when there was segregation, Ravelin had more pro-football players getting drafted from their school than any of the other schools. Now they opened it up so that black people can play for all of the white schools. As I conclude. I thought of course call exploitation of black athletes, I can't athletes be exploited. The top four rated football colleges may be Georgia, Tennessee, Alabama, and some other one. They're all from red states, white states, mega states. They won't even let the football player's mommas them vote fairly. But they love to go and watch them run up and down the field like a lawnmower and knock the hell out of each other. For their entertainment in an arena, like a gladiator. And, and, you know, and don't care nothing about the ones that get hurt. Oh, yeah, it's change. It's change. And we got to keep on pushing, as Curtis Mayfield say, we can't stop now. Move up a little high, some way, somehow. So I wanna thank all y'all for being on, and you're entitled to your views, I love your views, I love. Love, love, love your analysis, that's what make, as Ross D say, this program beautiful. We have diverse view, but the struggle continue. As, uh, we used to say, and Linda, and I'm pretty sure Doctor Jabah know, a lot to continue. Mean the struggle continue.
That's right.
All right, so we got to continue, not for us, but for the future black people. Even if they don't even participate. All right, Ross D, what's happening Wednesday?
Here we go. Now, we got a Dr. B coming on, we, we, uh, Dr. B is Dr. Mike. So what I'mma do is, on Wednesday, I'm gonna introduce him as Dr. Mike. Uh, uh, B represents his, his last name, but we had a, a, a doctor, another doctor, uh, B, and so, Dr. B is Dr. Mike. He's coming on and we're gonna be talking about canceling Kanye. O- obedient outrage in the black community. So that, that should be very interesting because you have a lot of people on both sides of the fence when it comes to Kanye West. But we, we're gonna be talking about him. And, uh, and so that should be interesting. All right, folks, so that's it, Professor Rock?
Yeah, I'm, I'mma try to get, uh, somebody from Black Lives Matter on Monday.
Okay, that's the day before voting, right? The final voting day.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so conscious corner and each one teach one, everybody have a great evening.